All right, welcome everyone. We're going to call the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for Thursday, June 10th. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Good morning, Madam Chair. As a reminder, if you are joining us virtually, please state where your location is. Commissioner Womack.
I know he's here.
Commissioner Womack.
Here.
Just in case my microphone was not on, we'll go back to Commissioner Wodden. Commissioners Teal.
Here.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Here.
Commissioners Sparks.
I'm so glad to be here.
Commissioners Skaggs. Commissioner Skaggs. Commissioners Ponstein.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
And Commissioner Morgan. Your location, Commissioner?
Barland Township.
Commissioners McLeod.
Here.
Legrand.
Here.
Coleman. Jones.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Bolkowski.
Present.
Brevi.
I'm here, San Francisco, California.
Commissioner Antor.
Here, Sparta Township.
Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have 17 members present, two absent, and you have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're on to item three of our agenda invocation, and I'll welcome Commissioner Bolkowski.
Madam, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr.? Commissioner Wodden.
Here, a little bit late and a whole lot of sleep deprived, but here nonetheless, calling in from Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Grand Rapids, and, thank you. Commissioner Womack, could you please clarify your location?
Grand Rapids, Michigan, Kent County.
Thank you. Madam Chair, it was a little rocky, but you have 18 members present, one absent. You still have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we are on to the invocation. Commissioner Bolkowski, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I want to second Commissioner Sparks' motion. That's great that we're here together, at least most of us, a few of us on special assignment in California, truly doing the county's business in two ways. But this morning for invocation, I invited our neighbor from next door, the Reverend Joe Jones, who's also the second ward city commissioner, my city commissioner, and so, welcome Reverend Jones.
Morning.
Good morning.
Out of respect for those here this morning that don't follow the same faith tradition as I do, I would like to begin this time of invocation with a moment of silence for reflection. I will then provide a blessing. Eternal God, our Father, I stretch my hands to Thee, recognizing You as the only help that I know. And I begin this morning by taking a moment to pause and say thank You. I want to thank You for this occasion to invoke a blessing upon this august body, this diverse assembly of public servants who have been selected to serve for such a time as this. I also want to acknowledge just how good You've been to our county. You have endowed us with bountiful lakes and waterways, with green space, and an abundance of natural resources. May we never lose sight that it all belongs to You. For the Psalmist declares, "The earth is the Lord's, and everything in it, the world and all who live in it." For He founded it on the seas and established it on the waters. Therefore, may we both, may we be good stewards of that which ultimately belongs to You. As we enter into this hour, we ask for Your blessing over the proceedings of today. May this esteemed gathering consider the wisdom of the original people of this land, the Anishinaabe, as decisions are being made, both today and the days to come. May this commission operate with respect, love, truth, bravery, wisdom, generosity, and humility in their hearts and minds. Dear Lord, I ask for a special blessing upon county administrator Wayman Britt as he prepares for his next season in life. I thank You for his heart of service, his longstanding presence, and his leadership here in Kent County. May his latter days be better than his former days, and may he dwell in peace and prosperity with his family. And Father, may we all here this morning, regardless of our age or ethnicity, our gender, regardless of our socioeconomic status, recommit ourselves to Your command that we love one another as You have loved us. Dear God, may we never make the mistake of forgetting that all of humanity has been made in Your image and Your likeness, and that You require us to act justly, and to love mercy, and to walk humbly with You. May the presence of Your Holy Spirit be felt here in this place, as we once again thank You, praise You, magnify You, and lift You up in the matchless and miraculous name of Your Son, Jesus the Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, for being here. What a wonderful prayer. Appreciate you. We are on to special order of business, and today we have the Area Agency on Aging of Western Michigan Annual Update, Jackie O'Connor. She's with us today via Zoom.
Yes, good morning. I'm Anne Ellewitz. Will Pam be showing the PowerPoint I sent her, or would someone like to share the screen with me and I can pull it up?
Yep, Pam's on it.
So while we're waiting for the PowerPoint to come up, I'm Anne Ellewitz, I'm the Director of Contract Services and Program Development at the Area Agency on Aging. Jackie O'Connor is joining me. She's our executive director, and she will have a few words to say at the end. I'd like to start off by saying thank you to the Board of Commissioners for your support over these past 20-plus years. We have so appreciated that support. Also want to give recognition to the three current Kent County Commissioners who are serving on our Millage Review Committee, and that's Commissioner Carol Hennessy, Commissioner Matt Coleman, and Commissioner Stan Stuck. They, three of them have been on the Funding Review Committee for several years now, and it's so great to have them with us. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Wayman Britt for all of his years of support of the Millage Review, of the Millage, and the being on the Millage Review Committee. And we will miss you. We wish you well in retirement, and in the staff meeting yesterday, we did kind of throw out the idea that maybe Wayman Britt down the road, when there's an opening, might like to join the review committee as a consumer. We think he'd be a great fit. So if you'll turn to the next slide.
It's not going to help increase funding.
All right, so why does the Millage matter? The Millage meets older adults where they are in our community. The Millage comes alongside and it supports the family caregivers, which are the spouses, the adult children, the grandchildren. It allows the family caregivers to keep working, to keep thriving in the community themselves. We are serving people from the age of 60 years old, way past 100 years, and the older adults, they all have different needs. The Millage comes alongside them, and with the 56 unique services, helps them get the services that they need. So on the next page, I'd like to show you just a quick snapshot of '21, and then I'll do a review of '20, and tell you what's ahead for '22, and I will do that all in 10 minutes. But this is a snapshot that we share with the community to show you. So back in November of '20, you approved the funding for '21, which was $12,181,407. We work with 34 different agencies, but that is not to say all the other community agencies who were involved in some way with the senior Millage as well. As I mentioned, 56 unique services, that's a large variety of services. So the Millage has continued to stay current over the years and be creative with new services that are developed. We also have a lot of purchase-of-service agent contracts for our in-home services that Reliance Community Care Partner Care Managers and Triple Care Managers do as well. We always have had over 50% of the funding go right to the priority services, which you can see there is Adult Day, home-delivered meals, in-home care, and transportation. In FY '21, there's more than $1.4 million that was allocated for transportation services, and for nutrition, which includes the congregant meals, home-delivered meals, community food club, and senior pantry, there's more than $2.2 million. Our eligibility has not changed from 1998. Basically, be 60 years of age or older, live in Kent County. We've had several successful Millage renewals, from the original one in '98 to 2006 to 2014. The years are flying by, and we are preparing for the renewal for next summer in 2022. So if you'll turn to the next page. I love this slide. This shows all the different agencies that are involved with the senior Millage. We have great partners. You can be proud of them. And you can see it's such a wide variety of agencies. Some of them are not just traditional agencies providing services to older adults, but a whole variety of services they're providing, and they also have a niche of serving older adults. Over the years, we have made it our mission to really have our partners have good relationships with us, with our staff, and with each other through the trainings that we do, through networking, through having like-minded services come together and share ideas. Those relationships benefit the community. It allows the agencies to know what each other is doing and to make for really good client referrals. And I can't say enough really about the AAA staff and the great relationships that they have established with the contracts that they manage. So when we started the pandemic, and those dark days, those terrible days, those relationships that we had established really just helped so much to be able to serve older adults in different ways than we had been serving them, but to come alongside and support each other. So on the next page, I'd like to give a little snapshot of '20. So for '20, we had $12,330,000 in funding, and we spent $11,074,400, which was 92% of the funding. Now, traditionally, we're going to spend 98, 99, 99.9% of the funding, but in '20,20, that wasn't possible with all of the disruptions to services, the services that just flat-out stopped, and considering the population we were serving, the older adults most vulnerable during this pandemic. But, so, I was actually quite proud of what our partners were able to accomplish, and we'll be getting that funding back this summer. Our partners already know how they're going to be able to spend it on services, and in '21, we are more than on track with our funding, so it's going very well. In '20, we served 24,418, which was an increase of over 700 from the previous year. So that's good, that during the pandemic, we were able to reach out and serve even more clients. You can see some of the demographics there. They make sense. You know, there's a lot more older adults that are female. The asterisks by the below poverty and live alone, those were self-reported, and you can see the, you know, the high priority services for those living alone and those who are below income levels. When we look at Kent County, there's about, last we knew, and I'm sure it'll be updated, but there about 18% of the population was older adults. So back when we did our needs assessment in '19, that was about 114,548 clients. When we look at the benchmarks for reaching the different demographics during the, within that population of older adults, we are meeting our benchmarks, but we continue to strive to do even better. So on the next page, I mentioned the top services in '20. During the pandemic, it makes sense that really the number one would be information and referral. The Millage funds the United Way 211, and you can see some of the other services. I do want to mention that in '20,20, we did extend some of the service definitions to do our best to reach the clients during the pandemic. So for example, the transportation service, typically, well, that's an older adult getting on one of the ride-link vehicles, going to where they need to go, get what they need to get, go to the doctors. During the pandemic, that really wasn't possible. So instead, we allowed agency staff to go and get what the older adults need, their groceries, personal items, medications, drop it off at the door. So that allowed older adults to continue to reservice. We also established a brand-new service, and I'll talk about that on the next slide, and I'm sure you have heard about it as well. It's the COVID-19 Senior Support Service. When we first established it, it felt like we weren't moving fast enough, but in hindsight, by the end of March, beginning of April 2020, we had it established. It was a service that all of our service partners could do, and it allowed us to come alongside older adults and family caregivers and support them, doing daily phone calls, reassurance calls, getting the older adults what they needed. We did continue it in the beginning of '21 due to some of the dark days this winter with the numbers of the virus, but the agencies have done a great job with it. So on the next page, this is just something I saw recently. The National Area Agency on Aging Association did a survey of all the area agencies on aging, call them AAA's, and looking at some of the challenges facing older adults, you know. And when you look at this, it's not going to be any surprises to you. It wasn't to us. It's already what we've been thinking about and looking ahead for 2020 services. But that first number, wow, that 77%, the concern with social isolation, it's always been an issue, but during the pandemic, it sure increased if people were more aware of it. I'm sure all of you sitting on this meeting would be able to think about some of your older adult relatives and friends who really did have a big decline because of just being so socially isolated. The technology, you know, boy, so much of us, we went to virtual, we were able to do it fairly easily. It took a little help, but we got there. But, you know, our older adults with lack of technology and training, so we've been trying to come alongside them with that. And then also, we know too, our caregivers need so much support. So those are things that we've been thinking about as well. On the next slide, just talking a little bit about going ahead. So back in '20, right before the pandemic, we've been doing some strategic planning with our service partners, our review committee, and staff, just taking a look at the Millage, doing a deep dive. What are we doing that's going well? What can we do better? What should we consider? And one of the things we heard loud and clear from our partners were, please get rid of paper, and, you know, and we looked at going to some online contract management system. United Way is working with the Seabrooks Company, doing EC Impact. We entered into some conversations, and we've been getting trained, and we rolled it out with our Older American Act funding process. Our partners love it. We love it, and our review committees are coming alongside and learning to use it as well, too. It's going to make us a lot more efficient and allow us to really be able to access information in real time and pull out information to anyone who desire more information on the Millage. RideLink, last several months, not longer than that, Kendrick Hyline, one of our contract administrators, has been working with all the RideLink partners on a new EcoLane system, kind of an Uber-type, just to make the transportation system here in Kent County more vibrant, that there's going to be more rides provided. Older adults will have less time, just make it much more efficient. They just rolled it out on Tuesday. Kendrick provided a report to some of our staff yesterday. It is so exciting, so I hope you will have him and some of the RideLink partners come back in a few months and report on it. It's a wonderful program for the Millage. And then I mentioned on the previous page how I've been talking about some of the services we're looking at. So we're already gearing up for 2022. Letter of Intense will be released July 1st, and we're looking at some of those services there that, we're going to, of course, keep funding all of our current services, but looking at some new services to continue to meet the new and future needs of older adults. So of course, looking at mental health needs of older adults, especially those homebound, looking at services that continue to address diversity, equity, inclusion, looking at training, the technology training needs for older adults. So those are some of the areas that we are looking at, and of course, social isolation. So on the next page, just here are some ways to connect with the Area Agency on Aging. We'd love to take any questions you have, have some discussion, but I know Jackie O'Connor, we would like to say a few things, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne.
Thanks, Anne. This is Jackie O'Connor. I'm the executive director of the Area Agency on Aging, or AAAWM. As Anne mentioned, the first Kent County Senior Millage was passed in '98, and it was '99 when the Kent County Board of Commissioners selected us to administer the Millage. I happen to be around at the first passing of the Millage and the next two renewals and increases. If you're born in Kent County or moved here during your lifetime, the senior Millage has helped thousands and thousands of older adults, as Anne's data showed. Also, their families and the community each year. Many of us, as we age, want to stay in the community we have grown to know and love. The senior Millage is helping people to do that. Our aging days can be productive, active, healthy through the senior Millage programs, but we also know that the senior Millage will be there to provide more assistance if we need it. Anne and her staff are doing a great job collaborating with all the service partners. She's provided you some good information about the lives the Millage has touched and the ray of services provided. So we thank you for this opportunity to share. And just as a reminder, the Millage is up for renewal next year in 2022. So we're here for questions?
Great. Thanks, Jackie, so much. Any questions today? Carol, I know you're dying to say something. Kick us off.
I am really pleased that I've been able to work with the Area Agency on Aging over a number of years. In fact, I was still in my 50s when I started working with them. I was underaged for being considered a senior. Look where we've come. And it's a wonderful service. It's very accessible. The people are very friendly. They're very knowledgeable, well-trained, and it's very dynamic. You can hear, as you hear, the priorities on where we're going to be looking for new services for next year. We continue to examine what's being provided, where the needs are, and the budget has been helped a lot through the CARES money, through the federal money that has come, and meals is something that just jumps out in terms of really helping seniors get the food that they need for food security. And there's still more need there, but, you know, but there's, there's been, it's dynamic. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I also have had a chance to be one of the commissioners that sat on the review during my time here as a commissioner, and what a great process. It's a process that we really want to duplicate in other areas and have been using your model as the Cadillac standard for how to process when there is funds from taxpayer dollars and getting them distributed and out. So well done with all of that. My question is, with your upcoming renewal, where are you with the process on that? Are you looking at a decrease, the same, or increase? What's that looking like?
Couple days before the end of the month, we have a meeting, Anne and I have a meeting with Wayman, and Jenny, and Paul, if I've got all the names right, of course, I know Wayman, to discuss that. And then that information will eventually be brought to the leadership of the board, and then to the full board. I understand there might be a change next year with when the primary will start. At least the last thing I heard was that the Michigan Legislature was combining the August and May primaries into a June or July date. So a few things up in the air at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I too want to thank Anne and Jackie for the incredible work and energy you bring to this task, not just you, but the entire team. I know there's a lot of folks behind you that participate as well in doing this. And I agree that the service that we provide through the senior Millage program is really a model. I am thoroughly honored to participate in that, and it's great to watch it grow and continue to be responsive. Particularly over the course of this past year, I guess in 2020, the professionalism and the capacity to be so flexible and immediately responsive to the changing needs of the community as we sunk into that pandemic was inspirational to watch. And at the end of the day, the process was capable of providing even services to more people than you had before. So I think that's just a testament to the flexibility, the professionalism, and the innovation that you and your team have. So it's great to participate with you and look forward to continue to do so.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, as most of you know, you know, I have a conflict of interest because my employer during the day, Disability Advocates, is one of those logos on there. But since we're not debating anything today, and I'm just going to state some facts, no advocacy, that, first, you know, I'm only a couple of years from eligibility myself, and I was in that room in 1998 with Jackie when we started working on the first campaign. It's like, holy mackerel. I'm just going to, yeah, I got to get on the waiting list. But, you know, the facts of the matter, that we have 44 funding sources at Disability Advocates, which means we have a lot of overseers, and no overseer comes close to the Area Agency on Aging on their diligence, fairness, the challenges they put back at providers, and then how they participate as partners in the community. I hope we take Anne up on her offer to bring Kendrick and the RideLink folks in. The work that Kendrick and the other folks at AAA did during the pandemic and for transportation, and what can you do, what can't you do, bringing in non-traditional partners, you know, Commissioner Morgan almost had a conflict of interest working with, you know, him providing rides or his entity. So just all kinds of opportunities to work together to help the entire community. So again, that was a statement of fact, not advocacy, and we'll leave it at that.
All right, I don't see any hands raised in Zoom world, so with that, I think we didn't issue any hardball questions today. You just got lots of praise because you do a great job. So thank you so much for being here and presenting to us, and we really appreciate all the work that you do. It's vital to our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to item six, public comment related to agenda items only. I know we do have a public comment and email, but I don't know if it's specific to an agenda item or general. Pam, can you guide us? Okay. Amber, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. I don't have a public comment for the agenda, so do I need to wait until later, or is this that time?
Yeah, we'll wait till the next portion. Thank you. Any other public comment related to the agenda today? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, consent agenda, and I'll call Commissioner Bolkowski for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move today's consent agenda, which is a few sets of minutes and a couple of resolutions related to easements with consumers' energy.
Second, moved by Commissioner Bolkowski, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on the consent agenda today? See no questions in the room. Questions in the chat. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Wodden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs. Commissioner Skaggs. Commissioners Ponstein. Skaggs. Commissioner Skaggs. Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy. Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item eight of our agenda, and Commissioner Wooden plan on unmuting for a portion here. I will call on Commissioner Wooden for motion for resolution, or item 8A.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to move adoption of Resolution 50 of today's date. It is to approve the acquisition of two courtrooms at the Kent County Courthouse, located at 180 Ottawa. It comes to us from Fiscal Services.
Moved by Commissioner Wooden, support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this resolution today? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I'm wondering if, if Wayman, you or someone can just address briefly what the current plan is on the acquisition of these two courtrooms. I know that there's discussions of eventually adding additional judges, as SEAO may recommend. But what's the status of that?
Al Jano should be on the line. He can clarify a bit more, but we're in the process of finalizing our agreement with the City of Grand Rapids. After the day's approval, we'll work through that. But there's no hard plan yet to occupy those offices, those courtrooms. But eventually, based on SCIO's communication, there could be, in fact, a request to occupy at least one. We understand that there's been conversation about maybe probate court needing some support. So we will, we will address that as it comes and communicate with the board. But Al, is there anything out there that I'm missing?
No, just, just, and you didn't miss it, Wayman, because I think it's pretty obvious to all that we're planning for the future with this. If we don't use them this year, we, we will be using them in the years to come. And we've had discussion, discussion with the current Board of Commissioners and previous Board of Commissioners, and we'll have that with future commissioners in the decades to come of having courtrooms and judicial suites. So we're planning for the future.
So it's, it's clear. This is not just going to be dead space sitting there. This is going to have active use to it.
Well, when we, when we say dead space, one of the courtrooms will probably not be used very much during 2021. But again, it's kind of a, we're planning for the future. But yeah, I would, I would imagine there'd be limited use to one of the courtrooms this, this calendar year.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I see none in the room. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 50, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks. Skaggs. Commissioner Skaggs. Commissioners Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy. Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 50 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to 8B of our agenda, and I'll again call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my, well, it is my pleasure to move adoption of Resolution 52 of today's date. But if I'm correct, doesn't Resolution 51 go first? That is the, the bond issuance, or was that striking from the agenda?
No, you, you for some reason are doing all three today. So we're on to 51, and you're making the motion.
Forgive me, I was reading, I, I think, an older agenda. It is my pleasure to move adoption of Resolution 51 of today's date, which is to approve the revenue for refunding bonds from, for the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority. It comes to us from our Series 2, 2021. It comes to us from the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority.
Moved by Commissioner Wooden, support by Commissioner...
Support by Brevi.
Brevi, questions or comments on this resolution today? Commissioner Ponstein.
I wanted to make sure people knew I was here, so I, I just have to speak on refunding bonds. So Wayman, my, my question is, once again, what is the amount of the fees that the taxpayers are going to be paying for this pleasure from our bonding people? And how is this set up? Is, is this new bonding series going to be callable, non-callable? Is the, are the payments spread out equally? Are there going to be Bloom payments where, you know, it gives reason for the bonding to say, well, let's, let's refund them again and do it all over?
I think we'll call up Tori and, and Chair Corndyke to give us a little more information.
I'm, I'm pretty smart, but I'm not that smart yet today. So we'll have these guys come up.
Since they're getting the money, they can fill us in.
Great question, Commissioner Ponstein. First of all, for those who don't know me, my name's Dan Corndyke. I'm the Chair of the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority Board. And with me today to answer your questions, I know the answers, but these guys need to work for their money. So we have Tori Richardson, who is our President and CEO, and Matt Teal, who is our interim CFO.
So let me first try to answer the series of questions there with just a very quick overview. So really, what we're looking for today is your approval to proceed with basically two routes that we think can be favorable. And one is a little less traditional. It would be seeking refinancing of this debt through a bank loan, which would hopefully alleviate some of those issuance fees. And if those rates were not favorable to us for the savings, then we would go with a traditional, go to the bond market, you know, refund these and reissue. And either of those cases would require the county's backing as they were done back in 2011. So the hope is that we would get roughly $2 million of savings by doing this, and we'd be reissuing this debt over the exact same remaining periods, over seven years. We're not extending it any further. And we would be doing this with the anticipation of savings that will come from refunding these. Again, we think that number, working with our consultants and the bond council, is roughly $2 million. Obviously, there's a little bit difference in terms of if we go with a bank, not having all of the, you know, the council fees that would, might be associated with that. But if the rates aren't favorable or the, the yields aren't there, then we can proceed with a traditional refunding and reissue.
And I'm not, you know, negative on trying to save taxpayers money, but the fees that are charged in these transactions are outrageous. And those are taxpayers' dollars also. So it's nothing against the airport. I'm going to be voting for you to proceed with this. But you know, if, if governmental units don't start speaking up, I mean, it's, it's a monopoly that they have. And, and ordered, in order to do the stuff that we do, we need to jump through all these hurdles, which I think in this age of technology is getting easier and easier. But the fees are substantial, and those are something that we seldom talk about. So thank you for your response.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo what Commissioner Ponstein was just saying, just a tangent, but the, with a, an entity like Kent County with a AAA bond rating, when you're just refinancing existing bonds, like, that there's any fees at all, let alone multiple thousands of dollars of fees, is ridiculous. I don't know how to fix, you know, Wall Street in this respect, but it's, it's copy and paste. I mean, there's not even, you know, attorney work going on. So the fees are ridiculous. I, I echo that sentiment.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, and not necessarily related to the airport. It is something that actually Mayor Keppley brought up during a recent Waste of Energy conversation at Board of Public Works, where the City of Kentwood borrows from itself in the sense of its own savings. I know I've asked that question to our previous treasurer, so maybe our current treasurer could look at, you know, we have around $360 million in the bank. And I know it's not all the county's dollars, but there could be ways to do that, not only reducing the fees, but also the interest would be paid to us and the other people who own those dollars and those pooled, pooled savings that we have. So definitely excited about doing something other than cutting and pasting our bond work. But I do have a question for the airport. With all this savings, are you guys going to start that expansion of the concourse sooner?
Great question, Commissioner. So...
It's related to this, right?
It is, it is. And actually, there's, there's two parts to that. So, you know, Commissioner Ponstein, the taxpayers aren't paying for these. These are users of the airport. So Commissioner Bolkowski, that can be used for savings passed back to the users of the air, airfield, but also gives us additional capacity so that we can proceed with some additional capital funding that we have. So we do have a lot of capital needs over the next several years. We'll be investing, you know, $700 million in expansion for our concourse, A, the current Federal Inspection Station facility that's out there, a baggage system. So there are a lot of capital improvements that we see in the next several years that getting this savings will, in fact, help us pay for some of those, as well as provide some relief to the users of the, of the airport.
And when are you starting the concourse expansion?
We, we plan to be back with you and talking about that. We're actually working through our financial consultant right now, the airlines, as well as the consultants for the design and just understanding, we understand what materials and supply costs have done, just revisiting what we thought we knew a year ago, you know, before the pandemic, making sure those numbers are good and that we're healthy enough to proceed with that. But those are our separate paths that are being tackled right now. And we hope to be back talking with you later this year about that, that project and moving forward.
Great. Commissioner Morgan has his hand raised.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. Yeah, boy, I, I think Commissioner Ponstein's awful consistent. I've heard the same, you know, position on these bond refinances. And I really appreciate his consistency on it. But I have to tell you, I, this is the last time this bond can be refinanced. I think we can do it every 10 years or so. And the new wrinkle is, there's actually a bank interested, because I think the, the amount is within their wheelhouse, which is kind of a new venture for me. But I think, you know, if we can refinance and save money, I'm all for it. I, I wish we had that capability with DeBoss Place. I, you know, I always hear a lot of complaining, myself included, about not being able to do that. But I think this is a, a great move. We can pass on some of these savings or move that money around. It gives us some flexibility. And like I said, these are original bonds from 98, when we did the first renovation of the terminal. So I think this will get us through the end of the bond period and save us some money. Thanks.
Thanks. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I certainly encourage the process of trying to find mechanisms of refinancing that saves us money, saves you money, saves taxpayers and saves users money. So whether it's, it's our cost as taxpayers or as users of the airport, it's certainly well worthwhile. And, and my defense of why the costs are as they are, I'll reserve that for private conversations with my colleagues.
Any other questions for the airport? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 51, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks. Skaggs. Commissioner Skaggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 51 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8C of our agenda, and I will again call on Commissioner Wooden for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to move adoption, or move the adoption of Resolution 52 of today's date, which is the approval of the Kent County Community Development Annual Action Plan and appropriation. It comes to us from Kent County Community Action.
Moved by Commissioner Wooden, support by Commissioner...
McLeod.
McLeod. Questions or comments on Resolution 52? Seeing none in the room. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 52, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks. Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy. Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 52 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8D of our agenda, and I'll call on Commissioner Wooden. Or, I'm sorry, Womack.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Womack, and I'd like to move Resolution 53 of today's date, asking our board to approve the Kent County Community Action City of Grand Rapids annual operations funding from Kent County Community Action.
Moved by Commissioner Womack, support by Commissioner...
Support by Wooden.
Wooden. Questions or comments on Resolution 53? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 53, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks. Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy. Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 53 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to our last resolution. I will again call on Commissioner Womack for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 54 of today's date, Continuum of Care Program, Contracts and Budget Appropriations from Kent County Community Action.
Moved by Commissioner Womack, support by Commissioner...
LeGrand.
LeGrand. Questions or comments on Resolution 54? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 54, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal. Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks. Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy. Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 54 is adopted.
Wonderful. We are now on to public comment related to any general county matter. And Amber, I will call on you. Sorry, and thanks for waiting. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Amber Bremer. I live at 455 Eight Mile Road in Comstock Park, Michigan. I am located in the Sparta Area Schools District. I'm here today to ask you to consider taking up a resolution similar to the proposed Ottawa resolution now being proposed in Muskegon. Senator, State Representative, a county commissioner, and growing number of elected officials have signed, asking the Ottawa County Commissioner to pass the resolution, which would end enforcement of COVID-19 orders and restore freedom to the county. A resolution for Kent County is currently being drafted, and I would like to see a Kent County Commissioner introduce that resolution. After my public comment, I will be forwarding the Ottawa resolution to each of the Kent County Commissioners to look over. It can also be found at adouwaresolution.com along with muskegonresolution.com. Over this last year, our school-aged kids have had the most strict guidelines while attending school. And according to the Kent County COVID-19 dashboard, there are zero deaths reported for anyone under the age of 29. reported for anyone under the age of 29. Unfortunately, our older demographic was impacted by 117 deaths from ages 60 to 69, 191 deaths from ages 70 to 79, and 386 deaths ages 80 or plus, resulting in a total of 694 deaths from Kent County community members ages 60 and older. Our goal of a Commissioner taking on the Kent County Resolution would not only ask Kent County to restore their constitutional freedoms, but for Kent County school districts to take back their control and to be allowed to implement safety measures they feel best suits their district and local community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amber. Do we have any other public comment today? No other hands are raised. No one here. All right, great. We'll move on to Commissioner Reports. Do I have reports today? No official reports today? Truly, a quiet bunch? Oh, Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a brief one. So Commissioner Skaggs and I are currently in San Francisco, California. We started our week in Des Moines, Iowa, and then Los Angeles, and now today we're going to start in just a little while here in San Francisco. And we're here with the Department of Public Works, members from the Right Place, and also members from GBB, which is a consultant that we have for the Department of Public Works. And we are checking out a couple of the finalists for our Sustainable Business Park. We're looking at some of their facilities and seeing what they have to offer, looking at different options. It's been really informative. We've gotten lots of questions answered, and I look forward to working through this in the coming months. And the DPW Board will be selecting the finalists, and we'll take it from there. So we've got lots of great options, and this has just been a really stinky experience, but also very interesting. So I'm happy to be here.
Any other official reports today? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to miscellaneous. Do I have miscellaneous today? Commissioner Burl.
Yeah, just kind of a, a happy note, like congratulate Commissioner Wooden on the nice addition to his family. So I know it's a, an exciting time, and like you said, sleep deprived. And again, congratulations to you and your wife and a birth of a healthy child.
Awesome. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to circle back. My last meeting, I made a comment on parks and the decision to limit what they were doing in June for rentals. That did change. It was in process of changing, but it did change almost that day. And I'm thrilled to know that a lot of graduations and other events that have been booked for June have been running within the guidelines that are required and definitely very appreciated. The other piece that I have is, I always like to bring up when I hear from residents, and I have a resident hit me with an email with some concerns about gypsy moths. And I wanted to just throw that out there because I don't think I'm the only Commissioner that might be hearing on this topic. So just something to have on the radar. The other piece is it also does impact our county parks. I know specifically Cannon Township's Board is going to be talking about that. It's too late to do something for this year, but they are going to be looking at next year. They're going to be looking at other entities in the county, and there are many local communities that already address gypsy moths and spraying. So I just think it's good to mention that for the other Commissioners as well.
Commissioner Antor. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to put out an invitation to any board members or staff. I am going to be having a meeting up in Sparta next week, myself and Natasha and Pam are putting together the invite. We got a couple people that have already accepted to tour the site in Sparta we talked about for the amphitheater. The Sparta DDA Director and Village President and Architect in the State of Michigan will be on site. And we're hopeful to get as many people up there as possible so you can just kind of compare and contrast the two locations. This is 120-acre site. It already is an amphitheater. If you, if you look at it for the first time, you say, wow, it's done. Obviously, it's not done, but it's, it's got all the attributes that you need in amphitheater, including the elevations, topography, water, sewer, location of Grand Rapids is fantastic. It's got a lot going on, so I'm hoping people can come out, take a look at it. I appreciate the fact that Grand Action and CAA is willing to come out and look at it as well. So just wanted to put that out there. It's going to be next week sometime. We're just trying to coordinate the dates. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Over my tenure, I've gotten some very unique emails and phone calls, and what am I about to say is no criticism of the parks. I'm a huge park supporter, and we're planning this 100-year anniversary of our parks with a celebration, and I think that's great. The email and articles and documents that have been sent to me put into question whether it really is our 100th year anniversary, because documents will show where the original Forester Parks Superintendent was appointed back in '21, which would have meant that this is the year of the 100th anniversary. And, you know, it may sound trivial to some people, but the person that was appointed that position was Linus Palmer. There's still residents that are, are ancestors of his, his great-grandkids and grandkids. And, and I think by getting this simple thing wrong, which is well documented, not only in official documents, but on numerous articles that talked about his life and, and when he, when he passed away. And, and he was the original Park Superintendent. It's, like, like I said, it's documented. So I would hope that maybe we can get some clarification, not just to get it correct, but for respect of the work that Linus Palmer did in his 44 years as a Kent County Park Superintendent. But how he developed and his foresight is, is well documented. And I think this is something that we've got to get right. I mean, it doesn't mean that we can't celebrate our 100 years in a celebration a couple years down the road, but I think it is, like I said, well documented that the 100th anniversary of parks occurred in 1921 when it, when it began. And, you know, I think Mr. Palmer started with one and created it to 19 great parks. So I would hope maybe staff can get a clarification, and, you know, not only for me, but for the whole community and the family members of Mr. Palmer, out of the respect for his work and when the parks actually started. So I just make that request to staff to maybe take a look at that. I can pass the documentation on to you if you'd like.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Commissioner McLeod for joining Commissioner Betsy Arts and I for an event that we had. Seems kind of like a senior theme going here today. Red Flags of Fraud. We presented that, a luncheon for our Kentwood residents, and it was very well attended with the Better Business Bureau. So thank you very much for your support and working and collaboration with that event. Today, we will be celebrating at the city of Kentwood. Thank you for the 1 million, more than $1 million from the CBDG in Kent County for investing in the, the Veterans Memorial Park. It is just an amazing park. Lots of people love going there. They're, it's just beautiful since we've made that investment. So thank you very much. We will be there today for the ribbon cutting. And then last but not least, I want to share that the State of Michigan has awarded 28 schools a wellness, um, a wellness award. It's the Michigan School Wellness Award with the Michigan Department of Health, the Human Service, and Education, and the school that I am a board president of, that we received, we're the only ones on this side of the state to receive that award through COVID. So that was a lot of work getting that done, but I want to say thank you to the principal, Principal Heckema, and to Vista Charter Academy. Thank you.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I wanted to first thank Commissioner Burl for his kind words and thank all of you and all those who sent kind words, prayers, and affirmations with the arrival of my, of my son last week. My wife and I were happy to bring or welcome our, our new son, Sam, to this world last Thursday, so he's one week old today, a beautiful nine-pound baby. My wife is a champion, and we are just so excited to be parents now, and just thank you all for your kind words and, and support as we start this new journey in our lives.
Thank you, Commissioner Wooden. You look well rested for a week out, just letting you know. Not that we wouldn't, we wouldn't expect anything less, but just saying. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Simply want to follow up on Commissioner Antor's invitation. I definitely look forward to a full conversation related to the location of the amphitheater. However, if you choose to travel out to Sparta, it, you'd definitely be aware of its distance from population centers. And, and when we talk about the amphitheater and we talk about the equitable access it would have for all community members, I had the opportunity after our last work session to talk with Lou Chamberlain. For those who don't know, Lou started West Michigan Baseball, and he, as he has said to me on a number of occasions, bought some cheap land along the river, and public transportation does not serve what is now LMCU Ballpark. And just last week, Lou confirmed his opinion that that's, that's terrible for him and his business. You, you know, you can't give folks who have low income free tickets because they can't get there without riding a bike or walking great distances because public transportation doesn't serve that venue. There are great employment opportunities that are lost because, again, it's outside of our public transportation zone. So when we look at the amphitheater, we have to look at all its aspects, because I'm sure, I'm sure there are other great natural amphitheaters. My assumption is this place in Sparta is where the Sparta Klein Rodeo used to be. I've got funny family stories about that, if you ever want to hear them, because my ma grew up in Marne, so, so part of me is, is not an urban rat. And so, all that being said, yeah, def- definitely don't, we, we got to start putting all these issues on the table. It's not just one location. It's, it's, it's more than a generation of impact in this decision. And I'm going to continue to invoke our value of equity in this, because West Michigan Baseball knows that they missed a bit 20-some years ago when they made that choice. And they've done a lot to make up for it, and I invite y'all to join me at a ballgame, so don't take it out on them. And we're working to get transit there. So that's my soapbox for today.
Commissioner Womack.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just want to congratulate Steve Wooden and his wife on their brand-new son and welcome their son to this beautiful world. I also would like to thank Joe Jones, Commissioner Joe Jones, who we had the pleasure of hearing from today for attending the Stop the Violence Rally here in Kent County, as there's been a historical number of deaths in not only Grand Rapids, Michigan, but in Wyoming, Michigan last year due to gun violence. So I want to thank Joe Jones for that. One of the things that came out without not only 100 men coming out to support this was some of the talk with the youth afterwards about gun violence, and a lot of guns have been stolen from gun stores. So we, we talked about looking into a way that county, the county or the city or the state can enforce some laws that would have gun stores lock those guns up in safes or have extra precautions in keeping those guns locked in a way that you couldn't have to smash and grab that 13, 14, and 15-year-old kids were able to pull off in the last 36 months that has helped elevate the level of guns that has fallen in the hands of youth. So that was something that came out of that great Stop the Va- uh, Stop the Violence Rally that I threw this weekend in the 17th District. Also want to thank Pam and Natasha for all of their work here at Kent County, and let those two, as well as Wayman Britt, know you are appreciated, and to our whole entire Kent County staff, you are appreciated. Thank you, Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to comment, just brought to my mind, Ms. Bremer, she spoke at public comments, so I, most of you know, you know, I've got two children from the beautiful city of Kunming, China, and China is a beautiful country that I've had the privilege to visit twice. Also, this was before, you know, the coronavirus pandemic. If you visit an airport in China, there are thermal scanners scanning everyone. If you are taking a, you know, trip around the country, you need to inform the police department in every city that you visit. I just, you know, bring that up as an example. I, I, I want to make sure that we're all thinking, you know, certainly, you know, the COVID pandemic was a major event and, you know, on-the-fly decisions being made. And now that we've learned a lot of lessons, I, I want to make sure that we are all thinking about how to make sure individual freedom, you know, is more important still in this country than kind of the, the collective aspects that you'd see in a country like, like China. And I, I think that's important, especially when it relates to individuals' personal health choices, whether, whether or not they want to, you know, be vaccinated for COVID or anything in the future, that people shouldn't be ostracized in our society, in American society, for, for those personal choices. And obviously, it's a balancing act, public health and the greater, you know, good of the community and individual freedom. And I think we should just continue to, when we lean one direction, let's lean towards individual freedom. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioner miscellaneous today? I have a couple of items. One, I want to call on Commissioner Jones real quick to give us an update on the CIP work session coming up at 10 o'clock today.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I have been working with Chair Bolter to partner to get some improvements with the CIP process that we've had over the last few years, at least, I think, all the years that I've been here and, and more. And in working with Wayman and with Jeff, what will happen at 10 o'clock that will be slightly different is we will hear from each department head on their CIP request. My understanding is we will, as a group of Commissioners, have a chance to provide feedback, emphasize where we all believe priorities and, and focus should be. We should be heard. Hopefully, then, when they come back with the actual recommendations, there will be some correlation between our input and those recommendations. They are keeping the same process. And Pam, one of the things I want to see if we can have here before that meeting is just a quick printout of the scoring sheet. I don't think that's hard to get, but there is a set scoring sheet that has been used by the committee that addresses the CIP needs, and that score is heavily weighted on how the CIP items are prioritized. But one of the pieces over the years is can we get more Commissioner input in that? So our hope is this process will do just that. The other layer of discussion that I had is there's been conversations about can we get a Commissioner on that group? And at this point, we're trying this first to see if we have that input or heard, and if this works out well as an improvement, then we can continue something along these lines to move on before we continue to have other dialogues on having a member of the Commission on that CIP group. So those are the pieces that I'm excited about to see come down here at 10 o'clock, and I think it'll be very enthusiastic for us to engage with the department heads on what they have put down, even in more detail, which is an important component, too. In the past, we've had some, just a couple of lines for description, and now we're going to have significant depth to what they're requesting and why. So here's, here's to government, although maybe moving slowly, still moving in a very positive direction for some improvement. So thank you, Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, and I just want to really appreciate, I want to convey my appreciation to her for, this is something we've all wanted to do, I think, for quite a while, and, and I really appreciate Wayman and Jeff and their willingness to hear us And I really appreciate Wayman and Jeff and their willingness to hear us out and to make some small changes to this process as we move forward. So typically, if you'll remember, we normally do these CIP work sessions much later in the year. There's not a lot of time for change if that happens, and so we're moving them up. And we'll be hearing directly from department heads, and we hopefully will be able to have some more Commissioner input, primarily because we represent the people and the taxpayers and those who fund these projects and services. So we're really appreciative of that. I also wanted to welcome Samuel Wooden. He is just adorable and got to drop off some goodies to the Wooden Home last week. And I wish I could have seen him, but he is super cute, and I'm certain he has fantastic parents. So with that, I hope the board will indulge me. I didn't want Pam to have to change our agenda because, you know, she would be the one to do it. So I am making a little change to the agenda in miscellaneous. I'm going to ask Commissioner Sparks to come up with me if she would. Hopefully, I can carry all this. I think I can. As you guys know, Pam and Natasha are both leaving us sadly at the same time. We very much appreciate you both. Natasha came to the county in two thousand and sixteen. Excited we might be a fun, a more fun. That's true. Guessing not. But anyway, she joined our team in two thousand and nineteen. Pretty tough time to join the Board of Commissioners, but we really appreciate all that you did. I think you both now have PhDs in Zoom and tech and really appreciate your work, Natasha. But we wanted to. This and this. And then Pam, Pam's a lifer here. And, you know, again, she joined the county in nineteen ninety-four. So fun fact there. Oh, and I forgot to mention the fun fact about Natasha. Did, she did adopt a cat named Moose from the shelter. Utilizing county services is always good. But back to Pam. Pam joined us in nineteen ninety-four. She's served in various clerk roles and administrative roles, came to our board in two thousand and fifteen. I think there's no question Pam keeps the trains running on time. There's a lot to do. It's a big job. We're so appreciative of you. We're very much going to miss you. Fun fact on her is she's a huge Jimmy Buffett fan, and will be going to Hawaii and Georgia and doing some traveling after she leaves us. And we're just very sad to see you go and glad you're only a floor away. And we'll be planning to tap you multiple times. So with that, thank you so much. And I also wanted to mention Commissioner Sparks also graciously donated some amazing gifts from her new spa that she opened. So I wanted to mention that as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Hope you get to enjoy some time.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. With that, I will call in Commissioner Bolkowski for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adjourn subject to your call to Thursday, June twenty-fourth at eight-thirty a.m. for an official meeting.
Moved by Bolkowski, supported by Jones. All in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you so much. I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are Kent County. We are Kent County. We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.